Well, thank you and welcome to the Mesa City Council meeting for March the 7th of 2022. I'll note for the record that all of our council is present because we have Councilmember Spillsbury with us via Zoom. We will begin our meeting this afternoon, or this evening, rather, with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd invite everyone to stand for a moment of silence, which I think is particularly appropriate, given the war in Ukraine and our thoughts and prayers are with that part of the world and with those who, I know we're all offering thoughts and prayers for a peaceful resolution of that horrible conflict. Following the moment of silence, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one proclamation that we'd like to give under the Awards and Recognitions Agenda. I'm proud to proclaim this month, March 2022, as Women's History Month in Mesa, Arizona. This month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society. I do want to say that we have a remarkable group of women working here at the city of Mesa at every level, from deputy city managers to department directors and engineers, to police officers, firefighters, electricians, and gas inspectors. Women play a huge role and operate in our city, and I'd like to recognize them all for doing such a great job. Now I'd like to hand this part of the presentation over to Vice Mayor Jen Duff.
Thank you very much. I am receiving a proclamation that the mayor has signed in recognition of the Women's History Month to celebrate women's contributions to history, culture, and society. So the month of March is Women's History Month. Thank you for turning on my mic. And even today, centuries later, and then inspired by those who came before them, women are still showing us what's possible and fighting to make our world a safer, healthier, more equitable, and just place for all. And on behalf of all the women in Mesa, and I accept this proclamation, and please join me in celebrating throughout the month. Thank you.
Why don't we, and I'll note for the record that Councilwoman Spillsbury has a big smile on her face as well. So, thanks. Sorry you weren't here to enjoy this with us, Julie. Why don't we assemble at the microphone for a photograph, just so we can put this up on social media and honor this day the way that we should? Kind of symmetrical here, aren't we?
Yeah.
Okay, we're looking at Kevin. I guess you get to go home and frame that. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. We invite Mr. Kevin Christopher forward to read the Consent Agenda.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. These are the items on the Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk will be considered as a group at the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered as a separate item. Item 2, approval of minutes of previous meetings is written. Item 3A, Act on Liquor License Application for Flancers, 1902 North Higley Road. Item 3B, Act on Liquor License Application for Red Mountain Bar and Grill, 2015 North Power Road. Item 4A, Act on One-Year Term Contract for SkyLogic Systems, Services, and Support for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 4B, Act on Dollar Limit Increase to the Term Contract for Emergency Environmental Remediation and Restoration Services for the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. Item 4C, Act on Three-Year Term Contract with Two Years of Renewal Options for Ammunition and Related Products for the Mesa Police Department. Item 4D, Act on Use of a Cooperative Contract for a Two-Year Term Contract with Four Years of Renewal Options for Vector, Manhole, Cockroach Treatment Services for the Water Resources Department. Item 5A, Act on Resolution Vacating A Portion of a 24-Foot Water Sewer Easement at 9240 East Cadence Parkway to Accommodate Construction of a Burger King. Item 5B, Act on Resolution Approving and Authorizing the City Manager to Accept Grant Funds in the Arizona Attorney General's Office to Be Used by the Police Department's Mesa Family Advocacy Center. Item 5C, Act on Resolution Regarding ZON 21-00850 for Property Located West of Stapley Drive on the North Side of Baseline Road. Site Plan Review to Allow For An Industrial Development. Item 5D, Act on Resolution Regarding ZON 21-01005 for Property Located South of Southern Avenue on the West Side of Alma School Road. Site Plan Modification to Allow For A Restaurant or The Drive-Thru. Item 6A, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title 4, Chapter 10, Section 10 of the Mesa Swimming Pool and Spa Code relating to Clarification of Pool Owner Responsibilities. Item 6B, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title 4, Chapter 2, Section 1 of the Adopted International Building Code relating to Buildings and Structures Occupied by More Than 10 Persons and Allowing the Building and Fire Protection Code in Chapter 9. Item 6C, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title 4, Chapter 1, Sections 3 and 4, Requiring Permits for Solar Panel Installation That Are Greater Than 10,000 Square Feet and Systems Not Installed by a Licensed Contractor. Item 6D, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title 4, Chapter 5, Section 4 of the Plumbing Code Amending the Requirements for Drinking Fountains to Small Businesses with Less than 50 Occupants. Item 6E, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title 4, Chapter 9, Section B of the Adopted International Energy Code relating to Random Testing of Air Duck Systems for Production Homes. Item 6F, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 21-00593 for Property Generally Located West of the 202 Red Mountain Freeway on the North Side of University Drive. Rezone with Planned Area Development Overlay to Allow For a Small Lot, Single Residence Development. Item 6G, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 21-00620 for Property Located North of Pecos Road and East of Sossman Road. Rezone with a Planned Area Development Overlay and Site Plan Review to Allow For an Industrial Development. Item 6H, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 21-00644 for Property Generally Located North of Germaine Road on the East Side of Ellsworth Road. Rezone and Site Plan Review to Allow For An Industrial Park. Item 7A, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ANX 21-00649 Annexing Property Located North of Williamsfield Road on the West Side of Mountain Road. Item 7B, Introduction of Ordinance Regarding ZON 21-00651 for Property Located North of Williamsfield Road on the West Side of Mountain Road. Rezone to Allow For Single Residence, Small Lot Development. Item 8A, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON 21-01133 for Property Located South of Warner Road and West of the Hawes Road Alignment. Rezone with a Planned Area Development Overlay and Site Plan Review to Accommodate an Industrial Development. Item 8B, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON 21-00930 for Property Located North of the 202 Santian Freeway on the West Side of the Hawes Road Alignment. Rezone with a Planned Area Development Overlay and Site Plan Review to Allow For an Industrial Development. Item 9A, Act on Ordinance Regarding ANX 21-00802 Annexing Property Located South of Thomas Road and East of Al Vista Drive. Item 9B, Act on Ordinance Regarding ZON 21-00797 for Property Located South of Thomas Road on the East and West Sides of Al Vista Drive. Rezone and Plan Area Development Overlay to Allow For a Mixed Use Development. An Item 10A has been removed from the Consent Agenda. Mayor and Councilmembers, these are the items on the Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Ms. Mosley, do we have, other than 10A, which was noted, any other requests to speak on an item on the Consent Agenda?
No requests, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll note that a motion has been made by Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson, for approval of the Consent Agenda. Please cast your vote. Ms. Spillsbury, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Consent Agenda passes unanimously. We'll now move then to Agenda Item 10A. This is to take action on a subdivision plat. This is Eastmark Development Units 5 and 6 within the 3,600 to 4,200 blocks of South Everton Terrace, east side, and within the 3,900 to 4,300 blocks of South Signal Butte Road west side, located west of Signal Butte Road and south of Elliott Road. I know that we, there have been some requests to speak on this item from the public. Ms. Mosley, do we have anyone on the, I know we have some requests, some statements that have been forwarded to you to be read. Is that correct?
Correct. We have received 91 comments and opposition, 31 that request to be heard from me, to you, and we have two callers on the line that would like to speak.
Okay. Well, rather than make the callers wait on the line, why don't we go ahead and hear from them now, and then I'll ask you to read the comments that have been sent in.
Do we have Travis Miller on the line?
Yes, we do.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Miller? Is this Travis?
This is he.
Mr. Miller, please identify yourself and then go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yep, this is Travis Miller. I am actually a resident that is located adjacent to the roadway. And I know that Nana Appia during the study session indicated that no one was. But I personally am located adjacent to both Binary and Rubidium, where those roads are going to go in. I also represent 683 residents from Eastmark that all signed a petition opposed to this for context. Now, in addition to which, Nana also mentioned that Park Jewel no longer connects. Well, that was because residents pointed out that the planning department had approved a road through a parkway and through a public easement. That's just an indication of the kind of work and the lack of diligence that have happened in relation to this planning, and also why that word might not be something you should trust so much. I'd point out that KSUB 220058 is illegal. The three proposed district streets, Mesquite, Binary, and Rubidium have not been added to the Eastmark's community plan. They're not in DU 56, and they're not included in the DU 56 transportation plan. Each and every one of those amendments would have had to be made before the subdivision would be allowed under law. The reason for that is that each one of those would also have required public comment. So while it might be true what Nana said, that public comment is not required for the subdivision, all of those precursor planning and zoning cases should have been heard in advance, which is what makes this an illegal and unconstitutional effort. In addition to which, it is truly unsafe to direct semi-truck traffic along a two-lane road that is going to run right next to a disc golf course in places where small children are intended to go out and play. That small easement is about 200 feet from my house, from my property. I can see where the road is from my bedroom. Children were intended to go and play out there and still to walk to the safety. Now we're going to have a two-lane road that weaves in and out for some reason, just to direct traffic to Signal Butte? It's unconscionable. There's no reason to divert that traffic that way. In fact, the ACOM traffic study that was conducted on DU 56 indicated that these roads were not necessary. You can go back and look at it for yourself. They said that there was no need for these district streets. Moreover, Indicap, the development project, the only one that's been approved so far, the only one that's even being considered, has said the only access road they need is through Mesquite up to Everton Terrace. This road makes no sense. Yet what's going to happen is the developer is going to build it, and they're going to come back to this council and ask for millions of dollars of CFD funds. This council is supposed to be a fiduciary of our money. We entrusted that to you, that responsibility. And now you're going to put a dangerous, unnecessary, illegal road right adjacent to our homes when there's 120 acres of vacant land directly east of it? There could have been any other path chosen. Any other path could have been taken to get that road out to Signal Butte. There is no reason whatsoever that it had to run along all of the homes and all of the parks that are getting put in for kids. This is illegal. This is unsafe, and is unnecessary. And shame on the Mesa Planning Department for approving it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have another speaker on the phone?
Yes, we have Monica Miller.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
This application should be denied because the application has not satisfied the legal requirements. Precisely, the land use group for each parcel has not been identified in the application or the plat as required for the subdivision plat pursuant to Section 6 of the Eastmark Community Plan. Because the approved DUP allowed the developer to apply multiple potential land use groups to each portion of the land, and the subdivision plat process pursuant to the Eastmark Community Plan requires the developer to select a specific single land use group that will be applied to each plat, a public hearing is required. This step in the process reduces the allowable uses to the land. Pursuant to ARS 9462.04, a public hearing is required when governing land uses are reduced. As an adjacent landowner, I strongly object to the newly proposed district streets that are not represented in the DUP. The city manager stated in the study session that the traffic will not be directed towards the residential community. This is simply not true. The newly proposed roadways do in fact route the traffic away from the arterial roads and toward the residential community. The original transportation plan was determined to be safe and sufficient to support all traffic within Eastmark when completely built out. We know this because the ACOM study concluded as much. By contrast, the developer did not even provide a written statement regarding a justification for or a need for these new roads in the application. Furthermore, for the community plan, it was the obligation of the developer at the development unit planning stage to ensure future development would not overburden the transportation plan. Simply, the proposed roads are unnecessary and only harm the residents who made purchasing decisions based upon the approved land use plan. The transportation plan, as originally designed, mitigated the impact of the adjacent commercial area by directing commercial traffic directly onto Elliott and Signal Butte. It is not sensible to build new roads that direct heavy commercial traffic from the commercial corridor in the direction and along residential neighborhoods where there is a park. Council should mitigate the impact of the commercial industrial corridor by denying this application and requiring the original plan. Even more, the subdivision regulations provide council with a justification to protect the residences from unnecessary harms of the nuisance and hazard of high-volume commercial traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Ms. Mosley, do we have anyone else on the line to speak?
No, Mayor, we don't.
Okay. Will you then read the comments that have been submitted?
Sure. Okay, first we have a comment from Bree Zapkowski. It says, "We are still missing over 41 acres of promised parkland, an elementary school, and a library here in Eastmark. There is no reason for us homeowners to pay for roads for businesses and warehouses other than government greed. Give us the 106 acres of park that we were promised. No more warehouses within the Eastmark borders. All commercial developments should be only entering from Elliott to from Everton Terrace. Park Jewel, Crisman, or any other residential streets do better for your residents to the Mesa." Then I have one from Jeffrey Hyturt. "I oppose adding Mesquite Road as an access point to Everton Terrace. Everton Terrace is a residential access road with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour, a pedestrian crossing, and is used as a school bus drop-off point. It is not appropriate for industrial traffic. It is also my understanding that an audit has shown Eastmark is due additional parking space, or I'm sorry, park space, and that this is some of the last available land." This is from Jordan Karen. "When I moved my home, my family into Eastmark and invested in this community, the approved zoning and transportation plan did not include the unnecessary road behind my home. The developer has neglected to take proper steps to propose this major change. They have failed to provide proper notification. They haven't conducted traffic or noise studies to determine the impact on the community. Running semi-trucks through neighborhood parks is not the vision that Eastmark promises residents. We were promised shopping, dining, parks, and community amenities. I am aware that Eastmark borders the Elliott Road Technology Corridor. This corridor was not designed to bleed through the Eastmark community. The land zone for this corridor's use was placed on the outer edge of the community to allow for already constructed major roads such as Elliott, Ellsworth, and Signal Butte to service then the necessary traffic for these commercial developments. It is unnecessary and an abuse of millions of CFD dollars to build this road through a community that does not need it. Creating a semi-truck shipping lane through community parks is not only unsafe but negligent. The disc golf course is running adjacent to the proposed road. How many kids will chase after wayward thrown discs right into this road? What parent will feel uncomfortable letting their kids play in a park adjacent to a semi-truck shipping lane? The developer is already deficient of multiple acres of city and community parks. They need to be concentrating their efforts in use of CFD dollars, which is an assessment tax paid by property owners to build safe parks that residents will enjoy." This is from Linda Rand. "The proposed plat is illegal. No one received notice regarding this zoning case. Additionally, this proposal would require an amendment to already approved zoning, the development unit plan. The DUP is supposed to provide a transportation plan that includes all of the roads and intersections for the development unit. These roadways are not included in the approved plan. Applications are required to have a project summary that describes traffic generation. There is no description of the traffic generation, and furthermore, no project summary has been made publicly available. The traffic generation is important. If more than 300 trips are likely to occur at any given hour, a traffic study will be required. The Institute of Traffic Engineers finds that for warehouses, there is typically one employee for every 535 square feet. Considering that the proposed Indicap project that will be along Mesquite Road has a proposed 1,638,600 square feet of warehouse space, this single project along the road network will likely have an associated 3,000 employees. In pointing this out to the traffic engineer, he did confer that a traffic impact study would necessarily, or would likely be necessary. Without this, we as a community don't know if the added roadways will be safe for the intended uses. These proposed roads are unnecessary. The master planned, master transportation plan, which was studied and found to meet the needs of Eastmark Transportation at Buildout, provides the technology corridor and commercial areas with direct access to Elliott and Signal Butte directly. It is nonsensible to add roads that will direct traffic in the direction of and along residential neighborhoods. This harms the residents and creates an unnecessary nuisance. Furthermore, the roads in Eastmark are funded by the residents of Eastmark through our special taxes or CFD. Why will we have to pay for roads that are not necessary and not only provide a nuisance to us?" Additionally, the subdivision plat process as defined in the Eastmark Community Plan requires the specific land use groups for each plot lot to be identified. The applicant has not provided which LUGs will be applied to the undeveloped land to the north and east of our neighborhood. Will the remainder of the disc golf course be developed as it is currently zoned, a neighborhood park? What type of use is being planned to the east of our neighborhood? Considering that there is an auditor's finding that the residents of Eastmark are entitled to an additional 41 acres of parkland, this is the last remaining land in Eastmark to be subdivided. This is our moment to take a stand and get what we paid for." Elizabeth Atkins writes, "I oppose the city plan Mesquite Road off of Everton Terrace in Eastmark. Everton Terrace is a heavily traveled thoroughfare from Ray Road to Elliott for Eastmark residents and was not intended to be a road for industrial traffic." Matthew Child says, "The section of Everton Terrace where it is proposed to have Mesquite Road exit onto is not a wide enough section to handle semi-traffic. It is also immediately at the top of a rise in the road where traffic traveling north might lose sight of any vehicles pulling out onto Everton from the proposed Mesquite Road. It is a potential traffic hazard. The increased traffic, truck traffic is not the only issue here. This warehouse project will also bring with it the added traffic of roughly 2,000 to 3,000 employees that will be employed there. A traffic impact study is absolutely required for a project of this magnitude so close to a residential area." Greg Sudreth says, "This is not how this land was supposed to be used. Where is our additional great park land? Where is our library? This is about greed. This is no other way to put it. There is no money in it for the developers to do what they promised they would do, so do what makes them money. Any council person that approves of this must be looked at very critically to make sure that they are serving the best interests of those that voted for them, or are they serving the best interests of their own pocketbooks?" Linda Cordero says, "The manner in which this has been and is being pushed through for approval just speaks to how this is not in the best interests of the homeowners nearby that pay a hefty fee for the roads around this area. Commercial vehicles have no place on Everton Terrace. Commercial vehicles have no place on a small road near homes and common areas paid for by homeowners. This was not in the development plan when I agreed to buy my home and pay the CFD fees. This provides zero benefit to the homeowners. Actually, it comes at a cost of over 40 acres of missing park space. Where is our park space? Facebook already took a huge portion of our land, which could have been our 40 acres of park and the play portion of the developer's promise of a live, work, and play community. I drive to Queen Creek and Gilbert to spend my tax dollars because Mesa has failed the local residents when approving data centers and warehouses, typically by sliding it by, just as you are trying to do here. People are busy, and you know most won't follow what's being approved, and many that do take issue just don't have time to show up to dispute something. Our elected leaders should be on our side, but they have made it clear they are not. It is a rare occurrence for any council members to vote no on anything." I strongly, oh, I'm sorry, this is Casey Pierce. "I strongly oppose any roads being constructed that will route commercial traffic through the neighborhood of Eastmark. We pay extensive taxes through the CFD to create a safe and beautiful community, and commercial traffic would create a dangerous and unpleasant environment for our families. We were promised a safe environment for our families with restaurants and entertainment nearby, including parks. What we are actually receiving is living in the midst of warehouses with commercial vehicles driving through our streets. It feels as if the city of Mesa considers us a revenue source but cares little for how livable our area is since we're on the outskirts of town. I guess they're willing to sacrifice the few to fund the many. Please require commercial traffic to be routed directly to Elliott and Signal Butte without connecting to our community streets. And please ensure that the developer provides all of the park areas promised. We agreed to pay the extra taxes in order to create the community vision sold to us by DMB. We are meeting our end of the bargain. It's time the developer and the city does the same." Jeremy McVay says, "These proposed commercial roads will have a negative impact and safety concerns to the residents of Eastmark. We strongly oppose." Sarah Wheeler, "To be promised one thing when purchasing a home in a subdivision that is still under development and then have that what was promised taken away from you honestly leaves such a bad taste in your mouth. It feels wrong to be told this will be a park, to only later be told, oh, never mind, this is going to be a warehouse space where big semis will be going in and out all the time. It's dishonesty. Give us the park space we were promised. There are so many families here that need room to play." Brian Banach, "The proposed subdivision plat that includes the addition of new roads is illegal, unnecessary, and a potential safety risk to the families of Eastmark. Notice was never sent regarding this zoning case. There is also no project summary that includes a description of the traffic generation. The roadways being proposed are not part of the original approved plan, demonstrating yet again another instance where the residents of Eastmark are being ignored. Developments around our community continue to go against what was originally promised. See the new areas of housing that were originally slated for commercial use. Continued tactics will bet with resistance and possible litigation." Alexander Chauvet, "The proposed plat is illegal. No one received notice regarding this zoning case. Additionally, this proposal would require an amendment to the already approved zoning. The DUP is supposed to provide a transportation plan that includes all of the roads and intersections for the development unit. These roadways are not included in the approved plan. The subdivision plat process as defined in the Eastmark Community Plan requires the specific land use groups for each plot lot to be identified. The applicant has not provided which LUGs will be applied to the undeveloped land to the north and the east of our neighborhood. Will the remainder of the disc golf course be developed as it currently zoned, as a neighborhood park? What type of use is being planned to the east of our neighborhood? Considering that there is an auditor's finding that the residents of Eastmark are entitled to an additional 41 acres of parkland, and this is the last remaining land in Eastmark to be subdivided, this is our moment to take a stand and get what we paid for." Kelly Devlin says, "There has been no traffic study conducted for this proposed road. With the current plan of the Indicap project coming in, I am very concerned about the amount of traffic that would be in these roads. I worry about the safety of our neighborhood as well as noise nuisance." Lisa Coonan, "The proposed roads should be a traffic nightmare for the Eastmark community. Everton Terrace should not have any connecting commercial..." Everton Terrace should not have any connecting commercial roads or driveways." Natasha Ipsen says, "Not only am I concerned about the loss of parkland promised to Eastmark, but more importantly, I'm concerned about the safety of its residents. Eastmark roadways are already narrow to begin with, and residents are often seen out walking throughout the neighborhood, even on larger roadways. If adequate access is provided to the warehouses from Ellsworth and/or Elliott, there's no reason to direct any of the warehouse traffic through the neighborhood. The added traffic, especially of large semi-trucks, would add unnecessary risk to pedestrians and drivers. The warehouse traffic has no business coming to the neighborhood, just as the neighborhood traffic has no business getting in their way either." Kristi Culberson says, "We receive no notice that a road is being planned behind our home, and the zoning when we purchased our home did not represent a road to be developed. City of Mesa seems to be trying to get away with some shady activities." This is a long one. Scott Bitner, "Good evening, council members. Roads created in Eastmark should be for the benefit of Eastmark residents, not commercial developers. The creation of East Mesquite Street, South Binary, and East Rebidium Avenue are the sole purpose of routing, for the sole purpose of routing semi-trucks to and from the proposed Indicap Mesa Industrial Park. I urge you to please review the Eastmark Master Transportation Plan, updated March 2021. Everton Terrace was designed as a two-way, two-lane district street. The proposed connection between South Everton Terrace and East Mesquite Street will have semi-trucks entering and exiting warehouses on the same road where buses pick up our children. Despite the Brookfield Residential, formerly DMB Mesa Proven Grounds LLC tells you the connection is not at a location where Everton Terrace is a four-traffic lane, four-traffic lanes wide. It is at a location where there is a single southbound lane and mere feet from where the single northbound lane splits into two northbound lanes. The master transportation plan also points out that an exception was made to move Eastmark Parkway further to the east to make room for Project Huckleberry, also known as Meta, which would knowingly increase traffic on Everton Terrace. Please refer to Section 3.4 of the Eastmark Master Transportation Plan where it states, 'Some shift in volume from the realigned Eastmark Parkway onto Everton Terrace and Ellsworth Road is expected to occur. According to the permit application for Indicap Mesa Industrial Park, there are 2,318 parking spots proposed, with 1,790 parking spots being required.'" So you already know traffic is being increased on Everton Terrace because of the Metaverse data mine, and now you want to add 2,000 commuter vehicles and who knows how many semi-trucks to Everton Terrace, which was designed as a small street for bikes, pedestrians, and residential access. I do understand that development units five and six are for mixed industrial, non-residential development. We all knew this when we bought homes in Eastmark. However, we were sold on the plans for a tight-knit community with high-tech manufacturing employment opportunities, not warehouses and commercial trucking. Please refer to Section B.2 of the DU6 North DUP, which states, "The jobs generated in Employment Corps of DU6 will not only support families in the community, but by keeping the knowledge workers and their families in the community. The jobs will support additional jobs in areas such as banking, groceries, clothing and dry cleaning, pet care, lawn and home care, home repair and maintenance, fitness and health, entertainment and dining. These additional uses will not only support the employees within DU6, but also enrich the lives of the families living in neighborhoods nearby. Now tell me if these new roads and the 5 million square feet of warehouses they will feed, sounds like it will enrich the lives of families living in the neighborhoods nearby. This is not what I envisioned, nor was what the residents of Eastmark were sold when we moved to the so-called Technology Corridor of Mesa." Christina Zimmerman says, "Traffic in and out of industrial areas needs to stay out of the neighborhoods as we pay for the roads and our increased taxes, and it is highly unsafe around our kids. Plus, our roads are very narrow to begin with. All traffic for industrial complex around Eastmark should stick to Signal Butte, Elliott Road, and Ellsworth. We all need the park acreage we agreed to." Jason Culberson, "When I purchased my home, the approved zoning, DUP, and the transportation plan for DU5 and 6 did not represent that a road would be developed behind my home. These changes harmed me, and I was not provided notification that these changes were being considered. It makes no sense to direct commercial traffic, semi-trucks in the direction of and adjacent to the residential community as opposed to directly onto arterial roads such as Elliott and Signal Butte, as was originally planned. Furthermore, the applicant was not, has not provided any information pertaining to traffic generation, and as a result, the need for a traffic study is undetermined." Steve Castillo, "When we chose our law on the north side of Relativity Avenue, we were shown a PDF plan of citrus trees and a water garden on the north side of the north wall. I would like the planning committees to make good on that plan, or one similar, and do not add a major road near that area either. Thank you for your attention in this matter." And I have nine cards that were submitted on a different platform that were redirected to us. Sierra Karen says, "I am aware that Eastmark borders the Elliott Road Technology Corridor. This corridor was not designed to bleed through the Eastmark community. The land zone for the corridor's use was placed on the outer edge of the community to allow for already constructed major roads such as Elliott, Ellsworth, and Signal Butte to service the necessary traffic for these commercial developments. It is unnecessary and an abuse of millions of CFD dollars to build this road through a community that does not need it." Luca Karen says, "Creating a semi-truck shipping lane through community parks is not only unsafe but negligent. The disc golf course is running adjacent to the proposed road. How many kids will chase after wayward discs right into this road? What parent will feel comfortable letting their kids play in the park adjacent to a semi-truck shipping lane? The developer is already deficient of multiple acres of city and community parks. They need to be concentrating their efforts and use CFD dollars, which is an assessment tax paid by the homeowners to build safe parks and resident, that the residents will enjoy." Brandon Byrne says, "Noise and light studies would be needed along with great sound barrier walls if the project goes through." Sophia Morrison says, "I did not purchase my home to have more traffic behind my house and make it an unsafe area for my family." Sheriff Middleton says, "My understanding is a traffic study is required for this agenda item. Please make it available to the public or explain why it is not done with the legal reason it's not required. I would like to know how these changes will affect traffic in my community. If these roads are put in, how do you plan on providing the 41 acres of park that is missing for an audit that was part of the development plan?" Sarah Rogers says, "We are homeowners in Eastmark. The developers have continually usurped the legal process and tried to change zonings, roads, infrastructure of our neighborhood, and the plotted land without proper notice. Yet again, they are proposing a plat for approval without following the legally required procedure. The proposed road infrastructure is unnecessary. Will bring commercial traffic to our residential area and was not represented in the DUP. In addition, we were entitled 41 more acres of parkland, and this land is the last remaining Eastmark land to be subdivided. Please stand for us." Eva Hansen says, "We do not receive, we did not receive notice for this change. We don't want to pay for this road that will be a nuisance to us. We were promised more parks. Stop lying to us." And Cedric Rogers says, "Please protect our community. The developers of Eastmark have continually overstepped their legal boundaries to infringe their desires on our neighborhood. As a homeowner, we have a right to be heard. Our community is not in agreement with the proposed plan. We were not notified. We are entitled to 45 acres of parkland, and this plot is the last of the land that the developers have left to fulfill their promise. In addition, roads constructed for semi and commercial traffic have no place in our residential community, nor were they represented in the DUP or transportation plan." That is the last one.
Okay, thank you. I know we discussed this briefly in our meeting downstairs, just kind of setting the stage for this discussion. Nana, did you mind commenting on, there were a couple of questions, I think, that came out there that, that I think it'd be good for you to comment on, and then perhaps also traffic. But I, I think we, there seems to be consensus around the idea that Everton Terrace is not appropriate for commercial traffic north, particularly north of the Green Belt and the disc golf course. Can you address, and then the other comment that I heard relative to the city of Mesa is multiple references to the, to a library. Can you comment on, on one, number one, is it's the city providing a library for Eastmark? And number two, the appropriateness of Everton Terrace south of the Green Belt being used for commercial traffic?
Mayor Council, I'll answer some of the planning, and RJ is here to also help answer most of the traffic crowd questions. So one of the things I heard was whether, basically, the process has gone through the legal requirements. Basically, it comes down to the master transportation plan, and I want to make it very clear to all the Eastmark residents and everybody hearing this is you have to read the whole documents together. You cannot just cherry pick and read sections. So there is very specific about the requirement for the master transportation plan. In the development plan, in the development plan, there is a specific requirement that says that modifications to the transportation plan can be made administratively by city staff. And the premise behind that is, once you get specific development, that's what determines the trip generation and basically the trip distribution. And so the master transportation plan generally becomes the overarching document. And when you get a specific, the city engineer reviews it to make sure that it's generically in compliance with the overarching plan itself. However, when those specific development comes, the city engineer is authorized to basically require updates and amendments. So that's really within the framework of what can be reviewed administratively. And then number two, also, is about the location of this road that we're talking about. If you look at the development unit plan, it was anticipated throughout the discussion and the project narrative in the development plan that there is likely to be a road that goes through that. Even the green space, there is a cross-section and specific language that talks about specific things that will be developed within the green space. A road network is one of those that are planned or envisaged to be developed within the green space area. And also, even as of last year, there was an update to the transportation plan that laid out specific road connecting to Signal Butte. This, at that time, there was not a specific development or plot that had come in. So this plot basically conforms to that transportation plan update that was approved back in 2021. In terms of the comments about the great park, there are so areas in the development that has not been developed. And the city is holding the developer responsible for making sure that they meet a requirement of the great park, which has specific amenities, including, you know, various recreational amenities and others. So we are so holding the developer responsible for meeting the requirement of the, the great park. And in terms of the trip, trip distribution, I think RJ is here. The city engineering department and transportation review the routes and the trip distribution to make sure that, basically, it meets the intent and the requirement and the intensity of what is allowed to go through the community. But I'll let RJ answer that question.
Mayor, Mayor members of the council, Eric Gudarian, our deputy director for traffic engineering here with me as well. He and another staff member reviewed the update to the master transportation plan and are generally satisfied with its results. They had a couple of minor comments, but nothing that would change the substance of the road layout. So there was one statement made that, that I will address. Everton Terrace, as you're going from south to north, transitions from two lanes to four lanes. So the point at which Mesquite Road will intersect with Everton Terrace, if the plat is approved, is the point at which it transitions to four lanes. So, you know, it, it doesn't mean no one could go down Everton Terrace, you know, into the residential area, but it's, it's not convenient. We actually like the proposed connection out to Signal Butte because for traffic that's looking to leave this, you know, non-residential area and head south, it gives them a way to do so. Otherwise, they would have to take Everton Terrace down to Point 22 if they look to go out to Signal Butte. So we actually see this as a positive rather than a negative, that there are connections both to Elliott from Everton Terrace as well as the East West Street that would connect to Signal Butte on the east.
Okay, thank you. Council, the discussion on this item or any comments, Mr. Thompson?
Well, I've got a couple, and also, I just realized the, the designer for this is one of my clients, so I'm going to have to abstain from voting, unfortunately.
Councilmember Thompson, if you're going to conflict off, you should, for the, to avoid the appearance, then no comments.
Then I'll, I'll have to conflict out.
And, and that's just to avoid the appearance of a possible conflict of...
Okay. Right, yeah, if you have a conflict, you can't comment in addition to speaking.
And, and I think, just for the record, it's to avoid the appearance of a conflict because of who did the plat, not because of actually Eastmark. It's the company that did the plat.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Freeman?
So, Nana, I heard a lot of discussion in, in what was read by Holly about the lack of communication. The residents didn't have notice of this upcoming changes and the roadways. Can you comment on that, or do you have any information on that?
Mayor Councilmember Freeman, so the plat, we go back to the requirements of the plat. The plat, basically, is going through the standard requirement where the plat is put before council. The, for subdivision plats, there's no requirement for residents within 750 feet, I think is a requirement for notifying residents, and also sending news to publications. That is not a requirement of a plat. Secondly, they're talking about amendment to the development unit plan and amendment to the community plan. This is not an amendment to the community plan or amendment to the development unit plan. This is an update to the master transportation plan, which is planned and built into the whole community plan and the Eastmark Development Unit Plan because it's anticipated that when actual development comes, that's when you're going to know, basically, the specific trip generation, the specific use that is going to go into the specific location. So you read all the documents specifically lays out that updates to the transportation plan will be reviewed by the city transportation engineer. It kept repeating that, unlike the major or minor amendment, which basically says that a planning director at his own discretion through certain criteria will determine whether amendments to the land use requires a major or minor amendment.
Nana, how many plats have we approved out here over the years? Do you have any idea?
There is a lot.
I just, this is not, this happened, this is a pretty frequent occurrence out here, so, well, across the city, but in a new development. So over many years, how many would estimate?
Leslie, do you have idea? I would say, I, well, I don't want to guess, but I can say the master transportation plan, this is the fourth one. Since 2014, we've approved updates to the master transportation plan four times. It's all been administrative over the years.
And typically, the plat will come to us now that the developer is working with a specific property owner, and they've determined the configuration of that site and how it's going to access transportation utility. So that's why it doesn't come at the very beginning. There's still a lot of work that gets done. So now, we have a potential sale of property, so the developer's coming to us with a specific plat. So this is left to be done administratively at the end of the process, where council has already approved all the other planning documents. This is the remaining part. And, and this is certainly, this area, since it's the last part, has seen a lot of changes. But Eastmark in general, I can tell you, has seen a lot of changes, right? I mean, this area used to be a resort with two hotels and golf courses. That's what, that's what I'm looking for. That didn't happen. And I think our commitment is the concern about the cut-through traffic from the trucks. We share that concern. We will evaluate and, and evaluate how this connects to Everton to ensure that that doesn't become a nuisance in the neighborhood. Our intention is, either through signage or how we configure the roads, to really make sure that is intended to go north on Everton up to Elliott or coming out to Signal Butte, which was already in the plan. That connection to Signal Butte was already there. So that's the plan, that we will make sure, you know, staff is committed to making sure to mitigate against any idea of a trap truck trying to go from an Everton down into a two-lane street and through a neighborhood. That doesn't make any sense to us. We would not support that. We will try to do what we can through signage and other efforts to try to make sure that isn't intended. We don't believe that's anybody's intention is to go. It doesn't make sense, it just doesn't work. And I, I don't think we approved that with this idea. I think we approved it with the idea we needed another access out of this area for these trucks. It can't be just one connection to Signal Butte. It has, if Signal Butte got walked off for some reason, there has to be another point of access for these property owners. And so that's why you see where that's lined up.
So I have one additional question, Mayor. So, Nana, there's a, what is the buffer, distance of the buffer between the Eastmark development? I have a plat here on page five. There's the current development, residential development, and then there's the Green Belt, I think you called it. There was some mapping... There was some mapping on that. And then, I guess that's where the...
Different widths, what's the most, were you looking for the narrowest portion of that?
I didn't see a measurement on it.
Mayor Council, actually, Councilmember Freeman, just in a way, answer your question. The community plan that shows a green space, it specifically says that this is general location, and it will vary over time as actual development comes in. It's really stated, if you look at the food notes, it said this is generically depicted. But I think my recollection was 75 feet in the document. But it was very specific that it's just generically located at that location.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Nana, I have a question. Is there a time constraint? Does this have to be approved now to give residents an opportunity to weigh in? They feel like they've been, not had the opportunities to weigh in and discuss this. I know the developer, whoever wants to get this now, is there, is there an urgency to get this done now? Do we wait two weeks, or?
Mayor Councilmember Luna, a couple of things. My understanding is really urgent because there are users or the people waiting to sign contracts who proceed with developing the property. But I also want to tell the council, this is a plat, this is a final plat, which is not a final site plan development. This is basically allowing people to purchase a property. They're still going to have to do a final site plan, which will show what use is specifically going to go into that allocation. Typically, planning is just to show the location of the boundaries of the site for future development to happen on the site. So if you look at the Eastmark Community Plan, it's got a criteria for site plan. Either it goes to the planning and zoning board, or it's approved administratively. Even with the administrative approval of the site plan, it's required to notify people within 750 feet and also post a sign as well. If it goes to the planning and zoning board, it's required to be notified, people within the surrounding areas as well. So this is really not approving a specific use. It's basically creating the boundary of lots within the potential development area.
Other comments, counsel?
And Mayor and counsel, if I could add a few things. You could always, you can continue the case, you could do that. But, as Nana, if I could follow up on what Dr. Apia said, is that this is an administrative act of counsel. Counsel sometimes acts as a legislative body when it's approving the zoning case. In those cases, there's other requirements. And this is not, this is not a rezoning case. This is not a zoning case. This is a plat. This is an administrative function in which counsel decides whether or not the process was followed, and basically, if it complies with the city ordinances. I realize a number of the people that called in and a number of people that commented have a dispute as to whether or not it complies with the process. But you've heard Dr. Apia explain why it does comply with the process. And I'll say, it's not just his opinion. He holds many hats. He's the director of DSD, but he's also the planning director and the zoning administrator in those two latter positions. He is the official person that interprets the code for the zoning ordinance. So his interpretation is the official statement as to how we interpret the code. That's not unique to Mesa. In fact, that's common in most cities, and in fact, it's also embedded within the state statute. So counsel could continue the case to have, you know, more outreach to the citizens. That certainly could occur. But the same decision will come back in two weeks, so whether or not it complies with the code. And you've heard from the planning director and zoning administrator and director of DSD, Dr. Apia, that it does. And so, you know, you'll still be, you'll still be in the same position. And so, but that's not to say that sometimes outreach isn't worthwhile just as outreach. So I'm not trying to diminish it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? I'll make a few. This is a, this is a wonderful part of our community. This is the Elliott Road Tech Corridor. This is Signal Butte and Elliott, where we're so proud of the multi-billion-dollar world-class businesses, Facebook and Apple and many others. There are building multi-billion-dollar facilities along Elliott Road and Signal Butte. And we're very proud of this. We've invested a lot of money in this, and this is where a lot of high-quality jobs are coming. On the other hand, we're also very proud of the quality of life at Eastmark. And so what needs to happen here is we need to protect that quality of life. We need to have an appropriate buffer and appropriate protection for the residential from this very world-class industrial development that's going on along the Elliott Road Tech Corridor. So, and I think a lot of the things that I heard from the community today are, everyone agrees on. Everton Terrace is absolutely not appropriate for commercial traffic south of the Green Belt. No one, no one that I've heard talk about this is arguing otherwise. And I've also heard people say, you know, "Please route the commercial traffic north to Elliott or east to Signal Butte." That, I think, is, that's the point of this plan, is to do exactly that, and to prevent and discourage and have traffic calming devices in place so that these big trucks, we don't want these big trucks who aren't on the two-lane road down into, down Everton Terrace. And that Green Belt that is the disc golf course, that's not going anywhere. And Eastmark is not being relieved of any of the requirements that they have related to the Great Park. And the city of Mesa is building a library adjacent to the clubhouse for Eastmark. So there, no one is, again, I think we're all saying the same thing. And in fact, the way that we can protect these residential developments south of the Green Belt and south of the disc golf course is to give some ingress and egress for these heavy industrial users to get north to Elliott and to get east to Signal Butte. And so that's the purpose of these roads. So I understand people's anxiety and the thought that there might be commercial traffic directed into a residential neighborhood. That is exactly the mission of what we're trying to accomplish here and what we're trying to prevent. So I think this is actually an example of good city planning versus what people think it might be. So for those reasons, I'm in favor of, again, and this is an administrative act, this is not a zoning case, this is not us exercising discretion, this is just us understanding that the appropriate process was followed. As these heavy industrial commercial, industrial users come in along Elliott Road, as Dr. Apia indicated earlier, there will be site plans, and there will be multiple bites at the apple, and everyone in Eastmark can come in and say, "Well, can we have a right-turn-only lane here? Or can we have, you know, no, no commercial truck signs on these streets?" And all of those things, city staff is suggesting them at this point. So it's not that, city staff won't be arguing against them, they'll be suggesting and encouraging all of those protections for the residential neighborhoods. So I'll get off my soapbox, but I understand, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Spillsbury, thank you. Would you like to share something with us?
Just, just really quick, between my really loud neighbors at my Airbnb and the subway outside, I'm sorry if I missed this, I'm in New York. So we will have an opportunity to vote on a future site plan, is that what I'm hearing?
Mayor Councilmember Spillsbury, the site plan will not come to city council, it will go to either planning and zoning board, or it will be reviewed by the planning director. So there is, if it's a major site plan, it goes to P&amp;Z, and if it's minor, however, each of the process still requires people within 750 feet to be notified and the signs to be posted on the property as well. And we've been also communicating with the Eastmark group to make sure they basically inform the community through various avenues that they have.
Okay. It does, I get frustrated when I see things come up like this, where the neighborhood is thinking one thing when, in reality, that's not what the city is doing or planning. And so I just would encourage, you know, better communication and more thorough communication, or however, however we can get that word out better. I always think that that's going to be a good idea in these cases, but, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? I see that Mr. Freeman's made a motion seconded by Mr. Luna for approval. Please cast your votes. Mr. Thompson, I noted that you voted. Did you intend to do that?
I'm staying.
Okay, I guess when it flips. Ms. Spillsbury, how do you vote?
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. We're waiting for the electronic tally to show itself? All right, thank you. Passes with six ayes and Mr. Thompson abstaining due to a conflict. Next item on our agenda is item 12. Items from, no, I'm sorry, it's item, we do have items not on the consent agenda. Items 11A through 11C are to conduct a public hearing and take action on the minor general plan amendment and rezoning related to the Tyler Ranch development to allow for residential development. The property is located within the 3,700 to 3,800 blocks of north Valvista Drive and north of the 202 Red Mountain Freeway on the east side of Valvista Drive. I declare the public hearing open. Ms. Mosley, do you have any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No, Mayor, no requests.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to address this item? Ms. Spillsbury, you don't wish to address this item, do you? Okay, thank you. I therefore declare the public hearing closed. If there's no objection from council, we'll take one motion for the approval of items 11B and 11C, the minor general plan amendment and the rezoning. Is there a motion to that effect? I'll see that Mr. Thompson's made a motion seconded by Mr. Freeman. Please cast your vote. Ms. Spillsbury, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is items from citizens present. Ms. Mosley, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No requests, Mayor.
Thank you. That concludes the agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.